Okay, whose place did you take?
She.
Okay, I saw that, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The May 1st meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, which is usually the first and third Tuesdays of the month, we have an opportunity for residents to address the council on an item related to city business. The portion of the meeting where we do that is called the open podium time, and that is from 6:30 to 6:55 approximately in the council chambers here. If you wish to speak at that time, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, then we open it up to people that do not have appointments to speak at that time. This portion of the meeting is not recorded or televised. Again, if you have questions, please contact the city manager's office. We have a number of proclamations and presentations tonight. The first thing is the Human Rights Awards. And do we, Mr. Getz, are you going to introduce that, or do we have Chair of Human Rights and Diversity Commission here?
We have many members of our commission, and students and adults, and we have our liaison here, so come on up. Thank you.
Yes. Hi, I'm Catherine Luck, one of the members of the Human Rights Diversity Commission. I have a little statement, and I'll read the manifesto as well before the rest of my lovely team will join and present their awards. So, the goal of the Human Rights Awards is to recognize Eden Prairie individuals, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and youth who have worked to create an inclusive community spirit through actions, activities, or programs. The Eden Prairie Human Rights and Diversity Commission is proud to be able to recognize outstanding citizens or organizations who embody the Eden Prairie Human Rights Manifesto. This year, we are excited to celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Eden Prairie Manifesto. The Eden Prairie Manifesto asserts that we, as representatives of Eden Prairie businesses, city government, educational and religious institutions, accept special roles and responsibilities in fostering diversity in our community. We are dedicated to upholding the rights of every individual in our community, to freedom, dignity, and security regardless of religious affiliation, race, ethnic heritage, gender, age, sexual orientation, physical or mental ability, or economic status. Representing all sectors of Eden Prairie, we publicly declare our intentions to continue to develop the development of multicultural community which will not tolerate acts of harassment or intolerance, to establish, communicate, and encourage community standards that represent diversity, and to promote acceptance and respect for individuals in an atmosphere of caring for others. It was originally adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on May 18, 1993, and reaffirmed by the Eden Prairie City Council on January 4, 2000. We are and remain intolerant to intolerance.
Hi, I am Student Commissioner Magna Chmata. Crystal upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by bringing a sense of hope and dignity to families in Eden Prairie and by being a fierce advocate for change in our community. Crystal serves Eden Prairie families through her work as a licensed social worker at PROP. She advocates for vulnerable residents as she works alongside them to provide practical problem-solving, advocacy, and resource navigation services. Crystal is eager to engage the entire community in our conversation about bias, diversity, and importance of recognizing that a person should not be defined by their life circumstances.
Oh. So go ahead and make sure the award and her honor and make sure it gets to her office.
Thank you.
I'm Commissioner Joan Halpulis, and I am presenting the Youth Award to Hayden Bun. Hayden upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by striving to ensure that every Eden Prairie resident knows that their voice is valued in our community. Hayden has a passion for lifting up peers that may be struggling. He is known for his willingness to challenge injustice in our community and his drive to inspire change. Whether it's through his work as a soccer coach for the Eden Prairie Soccer Association, his experiences as a student at Eagle Ridge, or the time he spends listening to the needs of his peers, Hayden is a shining example of the power of compassionate leadership. I'm proud to present this award to Hayden Bun.
I am presenting the Nonprofit Award to Interfaith Circle. Interfaith Circle upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by celebrating the commonality and diversity of our faith traditions in order to foster understanding and acceptance. Interfaith Circle brings residents together to encourage discussion about what it means to live in a multi-faith, multicultural community through events such as Who Is My Neighbor and their annual Thanksgiving gathering. Interfaith Circle makes our community stronger by encouraging community members to explore and engage with each other's traditions and beliefs.
So this is the award for their representative here from Interfaith.
I'm Greg Leeper, Vice Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and it's my pleasure this evening to present the Business Award to Southwest Transit on behalf of their Southwest Prime program. Southwest Transit upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by striving to provide accessible transportation to all of Eden Prairie's residents. Through the Southwest Prime Accessible Transportation, or sorry, through the Southwest Prime program, Southwest Transit allows residents to maintain their independence and access to our community. The program offers ADA compliant vehicles, discounted fare for seniors and veterans living with a disability, and provides customers with various ways of arranging transportation, therefore reducing the barriers that residents face as they navigate through our community. Southwest Transit works every day to ensure that every member of our community can thrive. Congratulations. Go to Southwest Transit and Southwest Prime.
Another award, Mr. Simic. Need a bigger shelf, bigger wall. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, I think Crystal's here. Are we gonna do it again?
Yeah. Good. And give her last name, because I didn't catch it last time.
It's at the top. I'm just sure. Perfect, okay. So Crystal Winston upholds the values of the Eden Prairie Manifesto by bringing a sense of hope and dignity to families in Eden Prairie and by being a fierce advocate for change in our community. Crystal serves Eden Prairie families through her work as a licensed social worker at PROP. She advocates for vulnerable residents as she works alongside them to provide practical problem-solving, advocacy, and resource navigation services. Crystal is eager to engage our entire community in conversation about bias, diversity, and the importance of recognizing that a person should not be defined by their life circumstances.
That's all. Well, congratulations to this year's award winners, and thank you to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission for running this program, and also to all of the people that made nominations for awards. The manifesto has been around for 25 years now. I think this Human Rights and Diversity Award program has been around at least 10, wouldn't you say? Which is amazing, if you figure 10 times three or four awards per year, 30 or 40 people or organizations that have been recognized for doing the important work of making sure human rights are respected and also adding to the diversity of our community. So, thank you very much, and congratulations. The next item today is a presentation from our Hennepin County Sheriff, Richard Stanek. Mr. Stanek?
Props, needless props, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thanks very much for having me up here tonight. My name is Rich Stanek, I'm your Hennepin County Sheriff. I get a chance, you know, every so often to make my way out to the touring Hennepin County cities. You're about 34 on my 45 list, so happy to be here with you tonight. I've got about eight to 10 minutes of remarks that I'd like to make, and then I'm happy to take any questions you might have, or not. With me tonight is Sergeant Cal McDaniel. Cal is a sergeant on our community engagement team, works really hard. And then Samantha Kleinfeld does intergovernmental relations for the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office. She works with elected officials from the congressional side down through the state, the local, and all points in between. And then, of course, tonight also, your county commissioner Debbie Gattell is with us, and I wanted to stop by and say hello as well, so we're pleased to see her. Madam Chair members, I just want to tell you right off the bat how pleased we are to be able to work with Chief DeMann and the men and women out here in Eden Prairie. They do it the right way. The police department, the sheriff's office, and your fire department have a very good working relationship. We work together very often on a number of different things that affect public safety in our community and for your residents. Let's see if I can get this PowerPoint to move along. There are a couple of things I want to cover. Like I said, one is about the sheriff's office and our jurisdiction, how it relates to Eden Prairie and the cities and communities surrounding you, our agency's leaderships and our responsibilities, our eight lines of business, which, again, if you, I'll be able to explain how that works in conjunction or tandem with local law enforcement. And then three areas that are important to me. One is our Forensic Science Division Crime Lab, the opioid crisis, and of course violent crime countywide. Well, there's a great photo, that's what 35 years have done to you. I've been a police officer for 35 years, started in late 1983 with Minneapolis Police, serving today as the sheriff of the county. I wouldn't change a single thing, except maybe the hairstyle. Public safety in Hennepin County, for those that aren't so familiar with it, about 1.3 million residents, a very diverse county, getting more and more diverse every single day. In fact, this morning I had a chance with the county board to introduce into 23 of our newest recruits, detention deputies, who either continue on working as correctional officers, or one day be sworn peace officers for the sheriff's office, or maybe one of the local agencies. And it just, it talks about the diversity, about 16-plus percent of my workforce is diverse, about one-third of my workforce are women, and that's a tremendous impact than what it was just 10 years ago, where we're sitting about 7% or 8%. And we really strive for that, working with our county partners. Got 104 lakes and three major rivers. I want to ask you what the name of the three rivers are, because it always stumps the council members, but the mayors usually get it right. And then 45 cities, 36 local police departments, and I know who to take care of up here, and that's the mayor. 36 local police departments, nine federal law enforcement agencies that we work with day in and day out across the county. My agency's structured much like the same way your local police department is. Like I said, Chief Deputy Jeff Storms is akin to Chief Jim DeMann in terms of running our agency. We have 1,100 employees.
And he lives here, doesn't he?
I'm sorry?
He lives here in Eden Prairie.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. In fact, you were supposed to stop by tonight, but I haven't seen him yet, so he must be working late. We're on a water emergency up in Dayton earlier this evening. Chief Deputy Storms and Jim DeMann would be peers in terms of being the chiefs of our agencies. Major Pete Dietzmann, Turpitt, Tracy Martin, and Darryl Hogg, who just retired last Friday, oversee the four bureaus or our eight divisions. Our eight divisions are our eight lines of business. Like I said, about 1,100 personnel, 800-plus full-time, 300 or so part-time and volunteers, meaning we use special deputies, much like you use reserve officers, and we've got 100 volunteers who work out of our jail, another 40 or so through our community advisory board, and about a dozen who serve on our Hennepin County Sheriff Foundation. Under state law, Chapter 387, it really lays out what are the powers and duties and the responsibilities for the elected sheriff of the county, working in tandem with local law enforcement, and working with our federal law enforcement partners on issues of public safety as they cross into Hennepin County. Our eight lines of business, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, look like this. The jail, in blue underneath there, if you can read that, it's hard from where I am here, but it talks about Eden Prairie specific in terms of the number of bookings or the activity from the sheriff's office. So, last year in 2017, you had 372 bookings. This year already, in 2018, through quarter one, 87 bookings into the Hennepin County jail. Our court security, we provide security for eight different courthouses countywide, three of them out in the outer divisions, Southdale, Ridgedale, Brookdale, the two twin towers downtown Minneapolis, 24 floors each side, Family Justice Center on one side of downtown, Juvenile Justice Center on the other side of downtown, all total about 90 courtrooms, and 75 judges or referees that comprise the fourth judicial district. And then you've got our patrol division out in between the borders of Brooklyn Park and Maple Grove. We've got about 150 deputies that work out of that patrol station, and then we've got substations countywide in the different cities and communities. Our warrant division and civil process are both mandated under state law, and we serve about 30,000 warrants a year in partnership with local law enforcement, and of course, the sheriff's office also responds for serving orders from the court, orders for protection, restraining orders, harassment, whatever the orders might be, transporting of mental health inmates, and the sheriff's office has to fulfill those mandates. Our Investigations Division works countywide, particularly when it crosses over jurisdictional boundaries. So if you have some type of crime out here in Eden Prairie, it crosses over into Bloomington or Richfield or one of the other communities, which is pretty common since you've got 45 cities jammed into one county, it's where the sheriff's office comes into play and works on coordinating the resources across jurisdictional boundaries. As you know, Bloomington has jurisdiction in Bloomington, and Richfield has jurisdiction in Richfield, and Eden Prairie has jurisdiction in Eden Prairie, but the one that crosses over are guys like Cal, the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office deputies who have jurisdiction in all 45 cities, and then we provide that resource to local law enforcement. Our 911 dispatch, you dispatch for yourselves out here through your public safety answering point. The sheriff's office dispatch dispatches for 38 communities across Hennepin County, but we are networked and tied together, so what happens out here, we know about, and what happens in the rest of the county, your dispatchers and police officers and firefighters know about as well. And then our Crime Lab works countywide as well, provide a number of Crime Lab services out here in Eden Prairie. It is really the crown jewel of the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office and crime reduction efforts throughout the county, between technology, forensic science, and really the innovative things that the local police chiefs put in place is what keeps violent crime at bay. And you'll see at the end here that violent crime in this county is down about 25 to 26 percent over the last 11 years in that county, and that's just only counting rape, robbery, murder, aggravated assault, the worst of the worst, and that's a good thing for your residents and the residents of the county. We talked about the Forensic Science Crime Lab. We just had our accreditation standards met or exceeded again during the month of March. We have this done every three years. We're one of three DNA-accredited labs in the state, and you can see the number of lab cases, crime scene hours. They come out upon request, so if you have some type of a crime out here in Eden Prairie, whether it's a car crash, a light plane crash, a burglary, or robbery, upon request from local law enforcement, the Crime Lab will come out, provide crime scene investigators to collect the evidence, bring it down to the lab for analysis, provide testimony in court as needed. Hennepin County opioid deaths, no big surprise, I'm sure you've heard this before. Over the last three years in this county, opioid overdose deaths have gone up 59 percent. 175 people died last year, 153 the year before that, 110 the year before that. I do not believe that 2018 will be any different in terms of those numbers. Our numbers already in the first couple of months of 2018 exceed 2016 numbers and are about on par with the 2017 numbers. So, I'd like to be more optimistic about it, but it's going to take education, prevention, intervention, and a lot of resources from folks like you, elected officials, myself, law enforcement, educators, the medical community, and Joe and Jane Average Citizen to get a hand on this. And Commissioner Gattell has done a very nice job with the county board, laying out a strategic plan moving forward, and maybe she'll get a chance to talk with you about that. Every single one of these opioid overdose deaths, as you know, are tragic, but every single one of them is preventable. Out here in Eden Prairie, your offices carry Narcan, naloxone, you also give out the Detera medicine disposal bags, which are a big thing, and I appreciate that, and herald you for being able to do that for your local law enforcement and firefighters. In fact, I had a chance to recognize the Eden Prairie Police Department and Chief DeMann and the men and women back in early January in front of their peers at Hennepin County Chiefs Association. Between those six agencies, I recognized that day they had over 50 Narcan, naloxone saves. I read some of the numbers coming out of here, I talk with Jim all the time. It is a good thing for your residents, and again, I thank you for having the foresight to carry that and make it available to your officers. We have those drug disposal boxes that we use currently, we have used over the last several years, we've collected nearly 140,000 pounds of unused, unwanted, expired prescription meds, but, you know, we'd rather the individuals in the community take responsibility and use those Detera collection bags, which are a little bit easier for folks to use, and then they're biodegradable, as you can just toss them in the trash. Like I said, we focus on violent crime in the sheriff's office, guns, gangs, kids, and drugs. I've been in a police office for 35 years, about a dozen of those years working as the homicide robbery commander for Minneapolis Police, and now as the sheriff of the county. Every time I went out to a violent crime scene, guns, gangs, kids, or drugs, one, two, three, or all four of those elements are present in every single one of those scenes, and that's what we could do better. We also coordinate with our federal partners on a number of different task forces, whether it's the Joint Terrorism Task Force, our high-intensity drug trafficking, or the narcotics task forces that we help coordinate and work with countywide. That's it, Madam Mayor, I promised eight to 10 minutes. I took eight minutes, 36 seconds this time. I got it almost down pat. I'm happy to take any questions or not, and again, like I said, Commissioner Gattell is here, she's been a good supporter and advocate of not just the opioid, but our diversity recruitment and other issues that affect your city, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Any questions for Sheriff? Yes, Mr. Case?
We're doing a lot of community conversation out here about gun violence prevention, and I'm just curious what you, from a county perspective, are doing, and what your next six months' plans are. And I could also ask Commissioner Gattell as well, but do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure. From a countywide, that's a great question, councilmember, Madam Mayor. From a countywide perspective, we coordinate and work with all the local agencies. They all have the same concerns, they all want the same thing, which is reduce crime in their communities, and doing it the right way. I'll talk about one thing in particular, and that is school resource officers. You've got a number of them out here in Eden Prairie that provide services to your school, and you partner with your school district to be able to do so. I believe that school resource officers should be school resource officers. They should dress like the uniform, you know, that a police officer wears and provide that safety and security in the school. You're not asking the SRO, as we call them, or School Resource Officer, to be a coach, or a counselor, or a mentor, or a mom, or a dad. You're asking them to be a police officer first and foremost, and provide the safety and security to the students and to the staff at the school. And that's really important, because sometimes it gets lost in the shuffle when, you know, people want them to do all kinds of things, and we're really good, we're kind of like the Maytag repairman. We hope we're never called, but we know darn well that when we are, we have to spring into action and get the job done. But violent crime in this county is something that, last couple of years, we saw a little bit of an uptick, but for the most part, like I said, over the last 10 years, a 26 percent decrease, which is a good thing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one. As you probably know, I had the opportunity, as a member of the Hennepin County Capital Budget Task Force, to tour the Crime Lab, well, and your other facilities, but the Crime Lab was very cramped. You're in a tiny amount of space. With the medical examiner's office moving out of that building, are you expanding into that, or are you moving your facility as well?
That is the golden question, Madam Mayor, but it's a great question. We have told the county board, we've had no less than three studies of it over the last 10 years since I've served as a sheriff. We have told the county board that is currently stands our current workflow and output, but we are fine with the space that we have and the space that we had to be able to renovate and move into. With the medical examiner now moving out, and I had a chance to talk with Doc Andy Baker just this afternoon up at the county board, they should be out of there, we hope, by 2020, maybe 2021 at the latest. That leaves that space available for whatever it might be, in terms of maybe expansion for the sheriff's office Crime Lab, but really, that Crime Lab belongs to the local cities across this county, so all 44 cities that use the Crime Lab are part of the user advisory board, and you're going to hear more about that in the coming weeks and months. So, you know, I don't, I manage the lab, I don't control the space or the budget for it, per se.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gattell, did you want to add anything?
Yeah. I don't even have eight minutes. But first of all, I wanted to come because the sheriff's here, and his big program around the opioid is very important to the county. I am the county liaison to Health and Human Services, and this is another arm where we are looking at the opioid crisis, and it's quite the crisis right now. So we want to thank the great leadership that the Sheriff's Department has done in this. They are out in front of people all the time, and we are moving from a model of incarceration on these kinds of cases to treatment where this is appropriate, and I think that's a way to move in the future. And so, one of the things that we are seeing at the Health and Human Services is we're seeing an uptick in these cases and out-of-home placements, meaning we have to pull the children out of a family and put them into either another family member or into foster care, and this is because many of the, many times this is a single-parent family who has an addiction to some drug like this. And it's impacting our system, quite frankly, at a much faster rate than we had anticipated, and it's not leveling off where we would like to see it. And you know that at the county, because of the Health and Human Services budget has increased about 127 full-time employees into the Child Protection Division, and we're still not getting exactly where we want to be. We're hoping the cases level off, but we're not there yet. But to that point, we decided to hire a person, and their sole purpose is to look at this opioid crisis, to do education, to do outreach, and to liaison with other parts of arms of our government, like the Sheriff's Department, to make sure that we're all coordinating efforts. To that fact, we've actually trained and then implemented a program with our security guards that work for Hennepin County in our libraries, and they now carry the drug anecdote for this. It's the spray one, and they can, we had two incidents at libraries downtown Minneapolis, and we don't want to have a fatality or anything that we can't work on. And so these are some of the things that we're already looking at and we're implementing right now, and so that's where we'll be moving forward. So it's a big issue, it can feel a little overwhelming right now, but we really are trying to be forward. trying to be forward-looking and trying to work together to get our arms wrapped around this. Questions?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out again. The next item on our agenda is the Girl Scout Troop 17155. We are getting a donation of bike racks from that group. Did you want to introduce it, Mr. Lotthammer?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmembers. As you know, we are fortunate to have a strong influence of scouting in our community, and lucky enough in many cases where, when they need a project and want to contribute back to the community, the city can be a partner in that and also gain the benefits of that. And this is a group of girls that have been working really hard. None of this happens quickly. They take their time and plan it out very well, and there's steps in their project. And in this case, they really looked at biking, bike routes in Eden Prairie, and then have looked at raising funds to help us with bike racks. And so invite them to come forward and tell us a little bit more about their project and introduce themselves and be able to say thank you to them in person.
Okay, do you want to come up to the podium, and if you'll give your name and your address, that would be wonderful.
Hello, my name is Eleanor, and I live at 6831 Duck Lake Road.
And my name is Nicola, and I live on 9148 Gateway Lane.
We are in Girl Scout Troop 17155, and we are working on our Silver Award project. The purpose of the project is to promote biking in Eden Prairie specifically for kids 10 to 15 years of age, and to provide additional resources in the community to support safe biking.
Our project activities has included volunteering at bike events, presenting at community events, and participating in the library renovation meeting to help promote safe biking practices and get more bike racks in Eden Prairie.
Additionally, as part of the project, we conducted an online survey to get information from the community on current bike-riding habits and experiences, especially those of school-aged kids.
Four key terms we learned from our survey include 96% of the survey responses were from school-aged kids, own a bike, live or lived in Eden Prairie, and ride their bike when the weather permits.
Bike riders most frequently ride their bikes on bike trails or to Eden Prairie City Parks.
Participants said more bike racks are needed at city parks and outside private businesses.
The majority of participants would search online to learn more about bike trails in Eden Prairie. Based on our survey findings and in working with the Eden Prairie Park and Recreation Team, specifically Matt Born, we are happy to announce new bike racks will be installed at both Homeward Hills and Miller Parks later this summer.
In closing, we would like to thank the City of Eden Prairie and the Park and Recreation Department for their willingness to support our Silver Award project and help promote safe biking and adding biking resources to the community.
Thank you.
Well, we would like to thank you, because this is just a wonderful project, and I appreciate you thinking of the city when you were looking for a project to do. And I just wanted to say how impressive you girls are and the very thorough approach that you took to getting research about your project, polling people and finding out where they want to go, raising the money, putting together this presentation. It's wonderful, and we want to thank you very much for your donation.
Is there, Mr. Lotthammer, will there be some kind of a plaque or something that will identify that these bike racks were the result of fundraising by the Girl Scout Troop?
Yeah, very similar to what you see on a memorial bench.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
So as the mayor is making her way to the podium up front, I'd also like to invite our senior advisory council members to come forward and stand with her as she reads the proclamation for Senior Awareness Month, which is May. And as they're coming up, I'd also like to tell you just a little bit about what's going to happen. One of our biggest events, it's the Third Annual Senior Resources Fair, which is Thursday, May 17th, from noon to 3:00 p.m. We're going to have a really good speaker. This is at Fox Christie. From 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock, Ian Leonard from Fox 9 will be our speaker, and talking about some of the challenges he's faced in life and how he's made it through it. So we're looking forward to him as a speaker, but also the resource fair that all seniors in our community can benefit from joining. So we have many other events during the month of May, and these are some of the people that have helped us plan those events, and you'll see their faces at many of the events throughout the month of May. So turn it over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lotthammer. The proclamation is as follows: Whereas the increasing number of seniors in Eden Prairie bring many opportunities and challenges for all components of our city, families, businesses, and government; and whereas every segment of our society is influenced by the needs, resources, and expertise of our seniors, and awareness improves participation and action; and whereas our Eden Prairie seniors play a pivotal role in formal and informal education, sharing years of accumulated experience and wisdom, which will impact our future; and whereas the community wishes to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of the seniors in our community, and recognize the organizations that serve older adults; and whereas Senior Awareness Month recognizes that seniors are an integral part of our community, now therefore the Eden Prairie City Council does proclaim May 2018 to be Senior Awareness Month. Thank you for your service on the senior council, and thank you for your work on Senior Awareness Week.
(applause)
Oh, I'm already a senior. I've got my head set.
You need to get to the side, so.
(inaudible)
I forgot that we needed to make a motion on the acceptance of the $1,500 from the Girl Scouts. Would somebody make that motion?
Sure. I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $1,500 from Girl Scout Troop 17155 to go towards bike racks at Miller Park and Homeward Hills Park.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to add?
Just one, our council member report from me.
Right. Okay, anything else? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda as amended.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, April 17th?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes for the city council meeting held the same date?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Consent calendar, is there a motion?
I think it's your turn.
Oh. Move approval of items A through F on the consent calendar.
Second.
Is there anything to poll for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have only one public hearing tonight, it's a code amendment on Chapter 10 and 11, basically housekeeping items. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. That is the title of the item, "Housekeeping Items." So it's a potpourri of various small housekeeping items scattered throughout Chapters 10 and 11 zoning code. So, for instance, and this is, much of this is for consistency with state statutes, allowing for, you know, efficient administrative processing and just smoother quality of work. So you have four main bullet items here, four main areas to clean up. One has to do with pool fence height regulations, making those consistent with state statutes, requiring that fencing be installed prior to water being placed in a pool. And then in Chapter 11, eliminating the term "bond" and replacing with "surety" for the landscape portions of Chapter 11. So there are many processes, many ways in which you can provide surety, not just bond. So we want to be able to streamline that. We want to provide some clarification for towers and antennas. For instance, you know, having towers and antennas and public infrastructure being permitted uses in the golf course zoning district, for instance. So those uses are permitted in all other zoning districts. So that in a nutshell, I think, are the details of the housekeeping items. The action would be first reading of an ordinance, amending the city code section.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Mr. Case?
Yeah, these are fairly perfunctory, I understand that. I just was curious about the tower and antennas within golf courses, and I assume because it's state statute that our hands are somewhat tied, but I can envision, since there are many areas of our city with quite expensive homes abiding up to golf courses, that I could envision this would be possibly problematic to have suddenly a tower in your backyard that we would have no control over. Is that, is that a possibility, and do we have no really choice here anyway because we're just abiding by state statute?
Good question.
I think the amendment is brought forth because there are towers and antennas in these areas, and we haven't identified them as a permitted use.
But are there setbacks?
Yes, of course there are. There are setbacks from residential homes, and those are in place in all the districts. This is, you know, we've recently brought to you the small cell antenna amendments. This is different than those. Those are within our right of ways, and so this is governing towers and antennas on private property as well. So if a golf course wanted to have better service for its members, et cetera, and wanted to have a tower there, it would be an allowable use, but there would be setbacks from adjoining residential areas.
Height restrictions?
Yes, yes, we have height restrictions on these as well. I can't recall exactly what they are. I think it's 80 feet to 100.
Right. The restrictions for the golf course district would be very similar to schools and religious institutions, the other public types of facilities that we have allowed them on. So there are setbacks, height restrictions, and other safety elements, as well as how you treat kind of pedestrian environment and the aesthetics at the ground level. Obviously, we can't do as much with the sky level.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would assume that this just makes it an allowed use in a golf course zoning district, but that doesn't mean a golf course has to allow a cell tower to come onto its property.
That's correct.
Okay. Right. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, which means that it's an opportunity for people in the audience to ask questions or make comments on what we're doing. Is there anybody from the audience that wants to address the council? Okay? Is there a motion?
So I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinances to amend City Code Section 10.03 related to maximum fence height, Section 11.03 related to landscape security requirements, Section 11.06 related to telecommunications applications, and Section 11.36 related to permitted uses in the golf course zoning district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval of payment of claims.
Second.
Okay. Is there anything to question? Hearing nothing, is there a roll call, please?
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terry Lukent?
Aye. Mr. Case wanted to report under Councilmember Reports.
So in the spirit of having our continuing community conversation over gun violence prevention, which really began, I guess, in earnest at our last council meeting, and just to let people know that we're going to continue that at our next council meeting, May 15th, where we'll be looking at a resolution that's non-binding to request voluntary compliance from any store in our city that would sell guns to not sell assault-style rifles and to sell only to 21 years and older. It's non-binding because we don't have the legal authority as a city to stipulate that. But because that conversation's been on my mind, there was a couple of things I wanted to bring up tonight. One is that I was, I was going to do a little ad for Menards. I like Home Depot too, but I like Menards. I was over at one of my favorite stores, Menards, and driving by Arzen, which sells guns. And I've been noticing the last couple of times I've driven in there that they just have this, and anybody that's watching or in the audience, you know, massive sign for guns in the windows. And it just hit me suddenly that that's got to be non-compliance with something, because we don't see that. We don't see stores advertising that way. And then I knew that the signage that's out front of stores where you have, I don't know what we call it, a tent? Sandwich boards, yeah. Is also in front of Arzen, and it says "Guns and Ammo." So I came back and I just called Mr. Getcho and just asked to have us look at what our ordinances do say, because I knew the sandwich board was non-compliant, and the large gun sign isn't non-compliant. We have, it's ordinance, right? It wasn't developer's agreement. It's ordinance of 10% of window space can be advertising product. So they're in non-compliance, and they have been or will be contacted, and I don't know what the timetable on that, but I would hope it would be quickly, not one month or two months to take it down, but we can chat later offline on that. So that's one thing, I just wanted to let people know that if, because I've gotten some emails and personal contact, that that's somewhat disturbing to have the huge guns sign. This, are you passing? Nope. Let's see, I was going to bring up the resolution. What was my second piece I talked to you? The distance? Ah, yes, thank you so much. So at the next meeting at our workshop, we're going to be looking at the way that we zone to keep certain types of businesses in certain areas. We're allowed in this city to limit where certain types of businesses go. We can't, we can't prevent adult X-rated stores from going in anywhere, but we can govern distances from churches and distances from schools, pawn shops, and many cities, the sale of guns in gun stores. So we're going to be looking at that at our next workshop meeting, and I just wanted people to know that as well, that that's a topic that we'll be addressing. Were we to look at something like a tweak of our ordinances to limit where gun stores could go in the city, the ones that are currently here would be grandfathered in. So just to let people know, we're not able in any way to prevent a store that's already here. But just looking in the future ongoing, I think this is, again, a timely time to, as a city, be addressing this, because communities across the United States of America need to be having these community conversations, because it's a difficult topic, and I think there are things that localities can be doing, there are things that state governments ought to be doing, and there's, in my opinion, things that national governments at least could be having the conversation, looking at. I think that's all, so thank you. Thanks for helping me remember, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you. Then we have a report from our Park and Rack Director, Mr. Lotthammer.
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmembers. We were recently approached by members of the school district to look at our joint powers agreement for Oak Point Pool. And kind of to take you back, that happened in 2002, so you kind of have to put it into context of what pool situations were then. That was one of two pools, basically, for public use at the time. And certainly, our pool situation has changed, and how pools are used has changed since then, especially since we added on bodies of water at the community center. It really called for, the original one called for, the district to be responsible for the pool during school hours. After school hours and on weekends, the city would be responsible for it. So all of the scheduling, all of the programming, all of the renting, and that has really evolved into being less city programs after school and at night, and more of us being kind of that renter of their facility. And so as we took a look at it's being used more by community groups rather than city programs, and I think community ed, who is used to scheduling all of their school district programs, and we are used to scheduling city facilities, so it really looked at, would it make sense for us to go back to the way that we really handle all of our other facilities, where if it's a city facility, it's scheduled... being kind of that renter of their facility. And so, as we took a look at, it's being used more by community groups rather than city programs, and I think Community Ed, who is used to scheduling all of their school district programs, and we are used to scheduling city facilities, so it really looked at, would it make sense for us to go back to the way that we really handle all of our other facilities, where if it's a city facility, it's scheduled by us, it's first city programs, second school district to be able to use it, and then after that, open to community groups to be able to use it. The same happens with school district facilities, except we reverse positions. School district first, city second in scheduling, and then third, community groups are able to use it. Essentially, this turns over all responsibility back to the school district for the pool 24 hours a day, as Mr. Rosso and I were talking about that, especially since it's not a lot of our internal programs using it anymore. Now, it's the school district's responsibility to administer that facility all of the time instead of part of the time, and to ensure that it's being used properly by the groups that they are then renting that school district-owned facility to. So as we met with their administrative staff on this and looked at the dissolving of the joint powers agreement and placing it similar to how we do other facilities, it does have a 12-month waiver and notice. And so, in talking with Mr. Rosso, if both agencies are willing to waive that, there isn't a problem of doing it sooner versus later. It also allows the district to do all of the billing. We would schedule and request the facility, just like we would some of their gyms. So the process is very much like how we work with all of the other school district facilities, and we feel very comfortable as a staff that we would still have the same amount and rights to use it as we currently do, or going into the future, if we needed to use it more, we would have a priority of scheduling to be able to use it more than what we currently do today. That's not necessarily something we foresee in the near future. Most of our demand is over at the community center. We still schedule lessons there one day a week, and then also have some amounts of open swim, but we've seen the demand of our public really decline to use that facility, and some of it is because it's not a great lesson pool. It's a really good competition pool. The water's cold and really set up for more of the lap swimming or also the competition kinds of use. So that, I think, is really why we're seeing more people wanting the community center when they have that choice. So if anything, we'll maintain the kind of use that we have currently there, but not likely that we'll expand it in the short term.
Questions for Mr. Lothammer. Councilmember Case?
Yes. I'm very supportive of this, and I think it's a great idea. So just more curiosity, I'm trying to think back. I feel like it was built, was it built '94, '93, something in there. There was another wing on the Oak Point, I think, built at the same time. But I thought this was built with city referendum money. Is that not accurate?
What I can tell is district referendum dollars were used.
It was district. Okay.
Yes.
So, and we were not party to that at all?
We, in forming that initial joint powers agreement, our party was to handle the programming and the scheduling outside of the curriculum.
That's school hours.
Just for a little bit of background on that, too, is really the district was very active using it during the day for school curriculum. Most of the day, it would be used in the past, and probably in the last seven or eight years, that curriculum was cut. And so, right now, most of the day, as we know it anyway, the pool sits empty, and it's really only till after the school hours. Physical education classes aren't using it like it was in the past when it was originally a fairly highly-used daytime location. And not a daytime location that we, as a community, can use because of parking and just access to the school while school is going on, but it did have a curriculum component to it previously.
Yeah, it is very much water over the dam, and I'm not bringing up a sore point. Well, I am, I guess, but I would just want to underscore, during my 20 years of working there and having every fifth and sixth grader in the entire district go through that school and use that pool and learn to swim, it's pretty powerful, and of course, we don't have that today.
Okay. Is there a motion? Motion to waive the 12-month notice provisions and terminate the joint powers agreement for Oak Point Pool on June 1, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other business to bring before the council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.